Recording started.
Thank you. Okay, welcome everybody to the Planning and zoning Commission for January 28th, 2025. We can start by standing and saying the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Uh, just a few things before we get going. Electronic device policy, if you see any of the commission members up here using electronic devices, is for access to the Google Drive for any documents pertaining to any of the testimony given tonight, and is not for communicating with each other. Um, we'll move on to continuing the public hearing for 20 Trobridge Vintage and Classic Cars. I, yeah, I just dumped the gun there. Let's introduce the commission. Thank you, Diane. We'll start over here. Mike Kazowski, acting chair.
Kitty Grant, Secretary. Diane Ryan, Commissioner. Screw Braden, Commissioner.
Online. Online.
Paul Shanley. I'm sorry, Catherine is the alternate. Paul Shanley, Chairman.
Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary.
Dave McCollum, Lineage's Coordinator. Tom Richie, SLR.
Laura, Director of Health.
Thank you. Anyone else there? Online? Okay.
Chris Plaskowski, civil one. Sorry, I don't think my camera's working at the moment. There it is. It's all right.
All right. Now let's move on, I apologize for that, uh, to the continuation of the public hearing Vintage and 20 Trobridge Drive.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, before we begin, I just want to refresh your memories that we had left the last hearing open because there was some, um, engineering discussions that had to occur between our staff and, um, the staff for 20 Trobridge Drive. Um, both of the engineers have worked very hard together and have come to some conclusions. And as you can tell by, uh, the responses in regards to comments made, SLR is confident that the rest of the, um, criteria in their report can be addressed during the construction process and prior to issuance of its zoning permit. And that I'll turn it over to Brian.
Um, for the record, uh, Brian Panico, full civil. So, uh, again, I've been, I believe we are now through, we've gotten through all the snap comments. Um, we've gotten made a couple of minor modifications. Uh, the southern pond is a little bit larger than we previously presented. And aside from that, we have also added, uh, curbing along the entire western portion of the parking lot. Uh, and the stormwater is collected into catch basins. It is then routed to boil water separators before it, um, discharges into the basin or in front of the building and the front yard of the building, I should say. Uh, and then, uh, it travels to the detention basin, uh, connected to the, so the system within Trobridge Drive that was built. Um, aside from that, that change, uh, which was the big, most substantial change on our end, uh, we did already discuss, uh, the turnaround, uh, the last meeting, um, but that was submitted officially in plan form to the fire marshal to show turning movements for both the fire truck and a garbage truck could make it, uh, kind of do a K-turn to get around, get to the dead ends portion of the parking lot. Um, and then the other change, uh, which we'll show you, um, I think the other big discussion was just the building of the sod and what that looks, what that looks like. Um, there was the request to basically just change, I think really it was to change the door colors, um, to make it a little less of just a pouring white, uh, door and throw some glass in there and maybe some color just to kind of get the building a little bit different of a feeling of a look. So that uh, we have a couple of different views of that.
Which is going to be green.
So this is if, as if you were coming up Trobridge, according to the poll, the sex.
Right, you're trying to.
And then, uh, again, that same video we kind of showed you guys last week, um, just with the updated colors. And so, um, again, you could see nice greens. Making a little bit different. Then as you get to the end of the building, a focal point of that glass curtain wall at the end has the main entrance to kind of delineate it from the rest of the building. So people know effectively where we're going to just by looking at it. And then some of this stuff, uh, within the, within this rendering, it's a little bit off from the lighting perspective. We did provide a photometric plan and, uh, one of the comments was to add some additional, uh, what will end up being wall pack style lighting on the backside of that building, just to eliminate that rear walkway. Um, but no additional, uh, no additional baller lights and or pole lights will be added. Is there anything else?
For the record, Jeff Yonkey, Hartford Architecture Partners, uh, we are the Yonkey spelled J A H N K E.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, I don't have anything to add when we get them all up.
Great. Awesome. Any other comments?
I'm Rob Madeira. I'm against the sponsor of this project. First of all, thank you to everybody on the commission and everybody's been part of this journey. Um, I don't have much to add to this, but I think, uh, the front door is supposed to be British racing green. So that's my big, you know, comment of the day here, tying this into the cars. But I think, uh, we're very excited to, to be at this point and, uh, ready to get started. So thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, um, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone have any comments? No one here in person? Amanda, anyone online have any comments?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, we'll move to commissioners.
Uh, looks great. Good luck.
Thank you.
Great addition to Bethel.
Thank you very much. Eric? Yeah, no comments. Kitty?
I just want to say thank you. I mean, I think it's going to be a great addition to our park. And I would say, thank you. I wanted to thank you how you responded to the questions very specifically. It was very easy to read and receive. So, thank you.
I agree that British racing green is better than the Irish green.
Nice job. Uh, Mr. Legnard?
Uh, fine with the project. Uh, good job. Good job working together with the, uh, different engineers and stuff to get to a good project. Thank you.
Paul?
Uh, I just want to say for the record, I did finish watching the video from the last meeting. I had to leave early. Um, so I am up to date on it and I do want to thank you for investing in our town. The project looks great. Um, I look forward to, uh, seeing the finished product. Thank you.
Jeff, any comments?
Just good job and, uh, glad to have you here and, uh, great, great presentation as well. I really like the, uh, the renderings. So good job all around.
Echo everyone's sentiments. Um, hearing, nobody else has ever said we will close the public hearing. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Alrighty. Um, moving on, um, we have Kevin Cleary, 30G, uh, twelve units at 105 Milwaukee Ave. No testimony will be taken. Uh, hearing will be continued to February 11th, 2025. All right. Uh, now we will move on to a new public hearing. Uh, TD and Sons Incorporated, 830G Site Plan, 26 units. I'm going to ask, uh, Kitty to read the legal notice.
This year, January 17th, 2025, January 24th, 2025, public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the public hearing on January 28th, 2025 in 81B of the Municipal Center, One School Street, Connecticut at 7:00 PM to hear the following. TND Sun Inc. property located at 53 Taylor Ave for a site plan consisting of 830G 26 one-bedroom units. The property can be found in the assessor's records as map 23, lock 17 and lock 14. A link to review the materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landuse@bethel-ct.gov. Parking for hearing is located in the middle of the building. Uh, Kitty Grant, vice chair.
Thank you, Kitty. Uh, before we start, before the applicant starts, I just want to remind everybody, um, how new hearings go. Uh, the applicant will present, the staff will then comment, and then the public is invited to speak. Please, when you, uh, want to speak, come up here, please state your name and address for the record. Um, and we will also include invite the members online to do so as well. Um, the applicant will then address your questions or comments, uh, after everyone has had a chance to speak. And if time allows, we will have, uh, more conversation. Thank you. I will pass off to Yeah.
I appreciate you, Mike.
Oh, uh, Amanda, uh, Eric Ruddig is recusing himself from the
Alright, I'm also recusing myself from this application.
Thank you, Paul. Now I'm going to do what David does and work this, that, that, yes. Full screen. Okay, what's this? Oh, here, you want to take it?
Oh, yeah.
Give it to him.
For the record, Stephen Trinkus, some professional engineer, South British, Connecticut, representing, uh, the owner TD and Sons, uh, Tony Delorio and his son Mike. Um, this is at 53 Taylor Avenue, uh, the first 8-3G I did in Bethel is just to the north of the site at 49 Taylor Avenue, which we did for Mr. Draper. We're not being able to zoom here. I think you gotta hit the, um, little hourglass thing there or that, the, the Or do you want to zoom in on?
I'd say, well, I wasn't, uh,
Oh, why is that?
Coloring it's drawing something.
Let's do this.
That's what I tried. We're going to drawing mode somehow.
Clear all. Uh, I don't want to annotate. How do we not annotate?
I don't know.
No, thanks. Bear with me here for a moment, everybody. I apologize. Why? Yes.
Clicking that arrow, why don't you click just the whole button? Over. Sorry, one more. Yeah, click, click that.
I did, and it's not really taking me up. Maybe if I stop annotating. Look at that, just scroll down.
No, we should be able to.
Now what if we do?
Zoom in.
Eric, only try one more.
Hold on, let me go to Yeah, it's not even moving to the next page.
Stop sharing and we're going to reshare.
Okay.
And we're not going to annotate. Learn that one. And we're gonna huh, well, this is this is fun.
Time for the easel.
Well, I This is our problem. We can all see still, right, everybody? We were trying to do something. Okay. Wait a second there. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm going to kind of start a plan farther back in the existing conditions now. So okay, so, uh, this is the site. Um, here's Taylor Avenue. On the right-hand side, there's a driveway to an existing single-family house. Uh, there's lawn area, uh, to the right of the house and below the house. Um, a little bit here, but then the rest of the site is wooded. In the center of the site here is a large ledge outcrop that extends about 22 feet above the average grade around it. It's just a big knoll of rock, uh, sitting there. Um, and this was located, uh, by the surveyors, uh, in the field. So the proposal, and we'll go back to the start of this, um, is 26 units, uh, one-bedroom units under 8-3G. A driveway will come in from Taylor Avenue, uh, come up, uh, there's a three, a six-unit building here. These are all two stories. Uh, this building will have three ADA compliant units on the ground floor. One at 60%, one at 80% and one at market rate. Um, and then, uh, we have two other three, uh, six-unit buildings and then an eight-unit building here. So the driveway comes up, there's parking in front of, uh, each of the buildings and additional spaces uh, south of the, uh, westmost building. Um, we're also bringing up, as, as part of Mr. Draper's application, he was required to bring up the, uh, water line and sanitary sewer uh, from the bottom of the hill up to his site and it ends, uh, right about here. We will be extending the sanitary sewer and water, uh, up Taylor Avenue around the sharp corner uh, to the site to provide access. Uh, Mr. Deorio had discussions with the Public Utilities Commission, or actually Public Utility Staff, I believe, because many of the homes along the eastern side of, uh, Taylor Avenue in this area are on small lots. They also have really marginal soils, uh, for septic. So by the extension of the sewer and water, it'll allow these homeowners to connect to that system to eliminate perhaps septic issues or, and also to perhaps allow expansion of their homes if they desire. Um, so the utilities will be brought up, um, they'll end at our driveway, but then they'll be brought in, uh, to service our site, um, itself. We have a, a profile of the roadway with sanitary sewer and water in it. Um, when we get to the site plan itself, from, um, the stormwater standpoint, we did a series of test pits on here. Uh, the soils are extremely suitable. We found, uh, sands in this lower area here in the lawn and test pits to the, uh, upper right of the house. And then, uh, out along the base of the rock and further to the west, we're all beautiful bank run sand and gravel anywhere between 10 to 15 foot deep. It's, it's all gravel, uh, except for the outcrop. One of the test pits we dug right off the, um, uh, base of the rock, uh, right about here. You know, we were down like 12 feet here. So the bedrock, it just vertical is not comes kind of under the ground as you'd expect with it. Um, so they're very suitable, uh, for it. So stormwater management, there's a pair of catch basins, uh, on the driveway just after we make the turn coming in. They'll be directed to a manhole where the water quality flow goes through an isolator row. And then the by, the storms larger than, uh, 1.3 inches are bypassed into the, uh, storm tech system. And then from the isolator row, they go into the storm tech system. Uh, there's overflow pipes, uh, which I do not believe will ever see water because the very good infiltrative capacity, uh, of the sand here, everything will, uh, simply infiltrate. On the western end of the site, again, we have a pair of catch basins at the end of the driveway. Again, same scenario, a manhole for the water quality flow being directed to the isolator row and a storm tech system, again, for, uh, the underground detention system. Um, it's all been graded to go, uh, you know, to this location or to the, you know, the, the one in the front. So those are the only drainage structures we have. We are lowering the grade of about 10 or 12 feet on average within the area that's not bedrock. Obviously the bedrock, they're going to come out. Um, as far as that goes, it's about 18,000 yards of bedrock, uh, that comes out. But again, this is a knoll that's about 20 feet above the average grade, uh, on the site itself. Uh, grading wise, um, uh, this is a kind of unique site because it, it drops off in the back. Um, so if we kept the grades where they are existing, we have either retaining walls or very steep slopes that have to be riprap behind this first unit of six. So that's one of the reasons we're lowering the grade down because it, uh, fits the landscape better. Uh, again, where these two buildings are, where they're intersecting the area of the ledge, obviously they're, you know, we're taking the ledge out to lower the grade. Uh, we're also lowering the grade in this portion to keep the development lower than the adjacent property to our south, uh, where the cursor is here. Um, so, uh, we have, you know, I did, uh, a profile of the driveway coming in from utilities. But we also did multiple cross-sections through the site to show, you know, the relationship of the, you know, the buildings and parking lot compared to it. And this is the, you know, this is the ledge outcrop. I mean, that's how tall it is. This is the average grade, you know, in here, and you can just see how much higher than it is. Um, so, you know, we did these to fit the landscape, uh, better. Um, you know, I did receive, uh, comments from fire and police. Um, I did not, uh, Friday I checked the town website and around 10:30 or so, the SLR comments were not there. Um, I was not around Saturday, so on Sunday when I, uh, checked, um, I did find the SLR comments. Um, I have not had time, uh, to review them. I want to review all of the comments at once and give you one uh, response and also one set of revised plans. I didn't want to have a set of plans for the police fire comments and then have another set for the SLR comments. So prior to the next hearing, uh, we will, you know, address those comments. Um, so I'm not in a position to discuss them, uh, be tonight, uh, at all. We do have a construction narrative, um, of how we're going to do all this work uh, and the watershed maps. I do, I believe the layers in the watershed map inadvertently were turned off when I plotted, so they don't show. But they are on the, the plan. So on the revised plans, we'll make sure, uh, the two layers are, are turned on. Um, we do show, you know, fire truck coming in, making the turns, uh, similar to what we had on 105 Cleary. I have an area for background. We'll provide, uh, the full turning movement to show that the fire truck can make a three-point turns and head back out. Um, you know, it's, we're doing land use for over 40 years. Quite honestly, only in the past two years have we've shown these turning, uh, movements mainly because now there's a, a software program that allows this. But, you know, on all other developments I've ever done, you know, when you have long driveways or any other driveways, you know, the fire trucks go in and they go out fine. If you have a long driveway, which actually this house to the south does, it comes in from here. If a fire truck had to go into this house, they would come in, do what they need to do, and they would simply back out because there is no ability to turn. Um, so again, you know, all the developments I've done, roadways and other projects, you know, uh, they've been designed with sound engineering practices without turning templates and there's never been an issue, uh, with them. So uh, we do provide, uh, you know, we're using ballard lights. There's no pole lights out here. And we have some landscaping, particularly where we have a retaining wall along the southern boundary as I lower the grade here. Um, one comment from SLR was, you know, there's only about two feet behind the wall. There's, uh, hundreds of different retaining walls, designs that you can use when you have limited area. There are large concrete blocks. Um, actually there's a new one out. It's basically like giant Lego blocks. They literally look like Legos and you stack them up. And the holes on the bottom of one go over the knobs that stick up on the lower one. So there's plenty of wall options to do this wall, um, as proposed. But again, we'll have a full response uh, to this. We do provide, uh, zero increase from the one year up to the hundred year, uh, per the regulations. Plus we're uh, addressing water quality with the isolator rows, uh, which are all designed as offline systems so that the, the dirtiest water, that first, uh, 1.3 inch, or 1.3 inches of rain, which, uh, generates, uh, one inch of runoff is the dirtiest water and that's all being treated by, um, uh, the isolator row, which is what the manufacturer recommends. That's how you get the highest degree of treatment where only that flow goes into the system and then everything else, uh, goes around it. So that's all I have tonight. Again, uh, you know, we'll respond to, you know, the staff comments prior to the next hearing.
Okay. Uh, for urban and public staff?
Yeah, you have my report there and I just want to note for the record, um, the correspondence that we've received and it's in the, in the drive. Um, and note for you guys that the property is in the R10 zone. It's got 2.497 acres of the single-family home. Propose 26 one-bedroom units and that native 1.42 acres of proposed to be served on the site. Um, we have reports from Tom Villa, Public Utilities Director dated 1/28/25. Laura Fasil, Health Director dated 1/28/25. Thomas Galliford, Fire Marshal dated 1/6/25. Todd Ritchie, PE Consulting Engineer, SLR dated 1/23/25. Up till, I think it was about five o'clock. Um, we have some public comments that are located in the Google Drive from Annie Ruddig and Ruddig Family dated 1/28/25. And I'm horrible with names. Please forgive me. Sylvia. Is it Sylvia? I apologize. Sylvia Kochman dated 1/27 and 1/28. And Sylvia Kochman and Roma's Kochman dated 1/26/25. Um, two points I want to bring up for you to, um, discuss this evening after you receive public input. And that is, um, the short version is referring to SLR's report, item number 39 of the report. And I'll just read it out loud so the members of the public can hear it. The applicant is proposing to excavate and remove over 25 vertical feet of ledge and recreate the very steep adjacent ledge's slope, 66 to 100% slopes towards the northern property line. SLR recommends that the town request the applicant retain a licensed professional geotechnical engineer to assess the existing proposed site conditions and propose construction methods to determine whether they are potential health and safety risks to adjacent properties from rock blasting and excavation, including the potential for rock masses and or fragments dropping, falling and rolling down the steep slopes onto adjacent properties. Second part of this would be, uh, we recommend that, uh, you have a discussion in regards to Lieutenant Matthew Zabatski's three requests uh, from the Police Commission, Police Department. Number one, a comprehensive traffic and safety analysis to assess the impact of the proposed development on line of sight and public safety. Number two, consideration of modifications or mitigation measures such as the relocation and redesign of structures that may impede visibility. And number three, consultation with law, local law enforcement and emergency response teams to evaluate any potential risks. Staff would also recommend that a sidewalk be held that would encompass the property and the street itself in order to have a clear picture of the town's experts' request for more information in order to complete the reviews.
Thank you, Beth.
Um, I mean, Mr. Chairman, just one, and I think on the police report, which I did have time to, uh, review, um, they're talking about the, the corner on, um, Taylor Avenue here where there is a large outcrop of rock. Um, you know, right on the 90-degree turn. I think everybody that's lived in town or myself who grew up in Reading, if that rock's been there since, you know, the 1960s or before. Um, I spoke with my client today and, you know, he's willing to work with, uh, town DPW when they're putting in the sewer and water to cut that corner back. The lead rock because it's really out to the edge of the road. So he's willing to, you know, work with the town to, to cut that back. So so, yeah, we'll, we'll address everything in writing, but
It's a, it's a great, um, it's nice that the applicant is, is willing to do that. I mean, uh,
Very.
But there is more, there's more to it than just that. And that is dealing with, with the road, the activities that are going to take place on site. The excavation of fill, the 20, 20-foot yard trucks. And, um, I think probably Attorney Marcus and I'll probably have a ar- argument or a discussion in regards to that.
Well,
With the flow, traffic, things of that nature.
I am the agent for the applicant, so please include me in any meetings.
Well, I'm just telling you right now that there are other aspects besides the sharp
Oh, I know, I know there is. That's ridiculous. I talked to my client about today. Glad that you'd be willing to work with the town on that. Good, thank you.
All right, I will now invite the public, uh, to come forward one at a time if they want to make any, um, comments or have any questions, uh, for the record. Come on up.
My, my name's John Visuano.
Yeah, please come up here so we can see it online.
My wife Christine, with the property owners of 55 Taylor Avenue.
I'm sorry. May I ask your last name? Say your last name for me.
This one, you, V I S U A N O. V for Victor.
Thank you.
To start off, first of all, we've received a form letter from the planning commission here. We just received this on Friday, this past Friday. Apparently this was sent to Mr. Shrikis on December 2nd and now we're only being notified three days ago about this meeting. Also, we've never received any certified mail with return receipt requested. So I'm sure there's a lot of other people in my position and that's why we only have a few people here at the meeting. Okay, pertaining to the SLR report. We have some questions regarding blasting noise. How do they propose to do, uh, you know, protect us regarding the blasting and the pollution from the noise? Uh, regarding uh when they do blast and releases chemicals in the air, potential breathing hazards. Also, uh, noise pollution from the blasting. What are they gonna do to mitigate that? Also, number fourteen here, which says that. The minimum horizontal separating distance between a private drinking water supply well and the stormwater system that infiltrates stormwater. Is one hundred feet. We have a well that's close to the border. It's about twenty feet from the property line. So, you know, they I think they need to take that in consideration, and that was included on the SL report, so that wasn't included in any of the plans here. There's also an oak tree that's uh up for question and nine number nineteen. Between both property lines. Um, we need to find out how they're gonna mitigate that and what they're gonna do going forward. Uh, our concerns are for the increased traffic on the road. It's a very small road. You know, traffic is the increased traffic is gonna come with people coming in and out of the property. Which butts our property. And you know the one. Which was touched upon earlier, number thirty-nine, and then the forty is the. Rock crushing and screening, obviously, you know, we're concerned about the the noise, the. The blasting of the rock that's gonna recur during the day. And how they're gonna exfiltrate all that material. That's gonna create uh noise pollution. Um, the increased lighting, once if this thing gets built, the lighting from the building is gonna be uh increased lighting. Facing our property. We have a window that looks out to the north side. We're gonna be seeing the people in the apartment set, and my light's gonna come into our property, and they're gonna be able to see into ours. So we we'd like some, you know, some more definition on the plans at least to include that. Also, the runoff from the road and the turnabout that he was talking about. Where is that runoff gonna go? Is that gonna affect our well? Um, you know, how is that gonna drain? Because the property on the north sloped down into the field. And part of his uh diagram there shows when we have a lot of rain, it pulls in the center of the lawn. How they're gonna mitigate that. Um. You know, generally, I think we we need more information, and because of the late notice that we got, this really didn't give us time to prepare anything. I'm sure a lot of other people are in the same position. Yeah, and that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Phil Schaefer, sixty-three A Taylor Avenue. And I have a great deal of concern. My house is uh between Good Hill and the uh apartments, right in the middle of Race Track, which is. From about Good Hill down to the S curve uh on Taylor where the proposed was. Property, and uh I talked to uh Bethel's finest in the past about the speed of traffic on a road, the type of traffic, gets it cut through. Uh, pretend to avoid going through Greenwood Avenue. Um, which is the traffic is crazy, and the people going down there to, you know, their contractors going down to Rings End and and some of the other. Industrial businesses down the street. There's a sign at the beginning of the street, no, no trucks. Which is silly because they're all going down there to Vanderbilt or or one of those. So my concern is the traffic. Um, Taylor Avenue is taking a beating over the last few years with the with the complex built on on the S curve there with the. Uh, although it's not directly on on Taylor, the apartments are put up on Good Hill, just more traffic. It it's there's just too much traffic. There's too many pedestrians, people jogging, running bicyclists. Um, I have a great deal of that and and home values for the all the folks on on Taylor Avenue. So that's uh that's what I've got to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Please.
And um, I might actually ask you to give help because my voice is not doing well tonight.
Name and address.
Um, Sylvia Kutchman, this is me, Taylor Avenue.
Thank you.
So, uh. Same thing I said before, we did not get our notice in time to prepare. So this. How can I trust that this will be done properly if from start a simple thing of sending a notice was not done, which was folded out, certified mailed. Addressed to totally somebody else, not even to us. Uh, not received certified mail as well. So this is the first thing that's telling you. You can't really trust how well these people will do their job. Second thing concerning blasting. I want to remind everyone what we went through with last time we lose blasting, how our houses suffered. How our kids suffer. We actually lost uh water because of that, so that was a huge expense. We had trees that died because of that. They dried out and died. Excuse me. And um, actually, um, I mean, if someone can read the letter, there's a lot of concerns that I have um and questions.
Did you have time reading the letters?
No.
Do you have a copy?
I have a, I have one copy, but there's two letters. Um, I'm not sure why it's too. I have.
Oh, that's what I have, yes.
Yeah.
Are these the letters that you email to um the land use?
Yes, just see if that's.
Yes, they're in the they're in the Google Drive.
Yeah. There's a lot of questions that I would like to answer, so.
Okay, yeah, we could. Please, Katie, if you don't mind.
No problem. Dear Council members, I am writing as a resident of Taylor Ave to express my solemn concern. About proposed twenty-six one-bedroom apartments development at fifty-three Taylor Ave. I am deeply worried about the potential impact that this project could have on our neighborhood. And I urge the town to carefully consider the following point before moving forward with this proposal. I also request that this letter be added to the official record for this proposal. First and foremost, I strongly request that the town require a comprehensive percolation test. To assess the potential impact of our well water supply. Many homes in this area rely on well water. And adding a significant number of new residents could place undue strain on the water table. Potentially affecting both availability and quality of water. Given that proposed development will likely draw from the same water source, I demand clarification. On how the developers can plan to supply water to proposed apartments without negatively impacting the existing residents. Additionally, I am concerned about whether this development is consistent with the town zoning plan. Taylor Ave is already a dangerous street for pedestrians. There are numerous areas where visibility is poor. Forcing pedestrians to dart into the bushes to avoid being hit by passing vehicles. The combination of hills, sharp turns, and blind spots make walking on this street hazardous. The addition of over twenty-six new units will only increase in traffic and activity, which could ex- excerpt. Extravade these safety concerns. I urge developers to provide a clear plan by how they intend to address these issues and reduce any potential risks to public safety. Another major concern is the potential need for blasting during construction. During the last round of apartment development on our street, blasting was performed, and I either. And either I nor my children felt safe at all. This time blasting will occur even closer to our home and other single-family houses. The vibrations from the blastings were so intense that my house actually shook, which deeply, which was deeply upsetting for my family. Shortly after blasting, significant damage occurred to the pipeline under Taylor Ave. Causing water to flood onto the street costing. With costly repairs. It is possible that blasting contributed to this damage as well as to the loss of water in our well. Which resulted in substantial cost for us. The disruption caused by this, along with long-term effects of the integrity on the street's infrastructure, cannot be overlooked. I strongly urge the town to require a thorough assessment. Of the potential for damage from blasting and ensure that appropriate measures are put in place to protect both our infrastructure and our safety. Finally, I respectfully request that a full environmental impact evaluation and statement be submitted as part of this proposal. Understanding the potential environmental consequences, including air and water quality. Noise levels and disruptions to local residents is essential to making an informed decision about this development. I trust that the town council will take these concerns seriously. And ensure all necessary studies and assessments are completed before making any final decision. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Sylvia and Chamas.
Yes.
Cohen.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more.
Yeah, the the the, about the timing.
Yeah, there's one more.
It's in the Google Drive.
It's the one time this morning. Um, I I don't have the others. I'm sorry.
It is part of, if it's on the Google Drive, it is part of the record. So we will, uh, anything that is submitted.
How will all this be addressed and how will I get any?
So it is it is up to the applicant to uh a a lot of your questions and concerns to uh respond to those. Um, and 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 then in our discussions with um town officials, our town departments. You know, they will issue letters of whether or not they're satisfied with their response or not. So it's a lot of give and take between the applicant and our town departments.
Okay, the responses are given to you. The response is given to the commission on your behalf. Okay, so things that you bring up, you are making statements about concerns that you have with this project. So the commission listens to whoever is are making those statements, and then they take it under consideration. When they're working with the applicant or talking to the applicant, they will bring it up for their discussion. The applicant will not address you directly. The applicant addresses them. Is that easier to?
No, that is. That is way better way of saying that. Thanks, Beth. Any other comments?
You know, the biggest issue is how close all this is happening to our single homes. Um, this will be right in the front door of. What's it is? Uh, in the back of uh, there's. Everyone, it's right in the middle. You're surrounding single homes. And these are not brand-new constructions. Uh, our homes are built. I don't think seventy's. How much can our construction take, like I said from before? Speaking from experience, it was not good experience. And like I said, no one back then took responsibility. I'm sure you remember uh uh water, the pipe that broke under our street. And street was closed for a long time. Uh, I mentioned in my uh second letter, uh, I have child who has asthma. And living in the site in the middle of of trucks coming in and out blasting and everything. It's not gonna be good for my child. This is putting my child. In big hazardous uh uh area, and this is not fair to all our residents. So just because someone picked this spot, why do we have to suffer? And put our health on the line. That's that's one of the biggest issues. Excuse me, from mass blasting and and being right in the middle, but there's no way that our health, my health is not good as it is. Even more affected because of this project. It's now somewhere deep away from us. It's, and this is a big thing that I need everyone to understand how close it is. One of the things that's been said about our trucks coming out, uh, where the driver is, the street is really narrow. So even ambulances at times had hard time making the turn. When emergency happens, you have no time. You have to be able to make that turn, and two cars hardly can, like, you have to go slower when you're passing two cars. About the height with the property. So this is just not a good spot for twenty-six additional apartments.
Uh, anyone else would like to come up and speak?
Tim Draper, forty-eight, Ant Patty's Lane West. First thing I'd like to say is my condolences to Mr. Laker. This is public comment for fifty-three Taylor Avenue. So it's public comment and questions. I'm gonna have a little bit of both for everybody. It's on the commission. And I'm gonna direct you, I'm you're the chairman today, so it'll be directed to you to discuss those. First thing is, is the town hiring a soil scientist to locate any wetlands would have longer put at the site? That's a question. Two, is curbing going to be installed along Taylor Avenue? Right. What can the maximum slope on the site be? What is the maximum that it can be? And are these. Modeable mode mode areas or unmode areas? Or. Does the lighting have to be for the parking areas or just the building? And is this a building code or a planning and zoning code? Five. What is the rule code or law for taking stop signs and stop bars? Leaving the project site? And are all sites required to do it? Six. I can slow down if anybody.
No, no, you're good.
According to the Bethel Director of Health, an eight-by-ten-foot dumpster pad is a health and safety issue. But a ten-by-twelve pad is not. Please, somebody explain to me why. This is a comment that I have. This is a comment, so this is gonna address every, you know, my thoughts on this, and there's still a question involved in it. My understanding from my own properties and from me asking my refuse hauler. And he's the manager of Oak Ridge Waste, where all our waste goes in town of Bethel. What size is recommended? And his response, that's what I asked him, what size is recommended for a dumpster? And the recyclable tubs. His response is just a fifth of dumpster and recycle bins. And the reason is that is because basically people are lazy, and they will just put stuff behind the dumpster. To the side of the dumpster instead of lifting up to the top. The question, that that was a comment. Another question relating to that is why does a dumpster have to be on a concrete pad and not an asphalt pad? Seven. Is this site in the sewer district? I see a map on Google Drive. It says sewer service area, town of Bethel, plan or conservation map. It says it is, but I'm not sure. And I asked the town engineer, Tom, uh, and he wasn't sure, and he was looking into it. I gave him a copy of the map. And this is gonna be a comment. For just a general, really, it's for the commission. This is about. People in apartments, how many people are in apartments, and this is just going by what I know. With the four eight-dash-thirty-G applications that I have. Have have. I don't know. So let's see. It's pretty much, I I hear the the question all the time from people, and it never gets answered. So this is again, this is from my own experience. I have a forty-nine Taylor, or I'm sorry, I'm gonna start at ninety-one Worcester Street. I have twelve units there. Eight two bedrooms, one one or two one bedrooms, two four bedrooms. Five children. Forty-nine Taylor Avenue, eighteen units, eighteen one-bedroom units, zero children. Nine Good Hill, six units, two bedroom units, one child. Forty-two Nashville Road, five units, all two bedroom, zero children. That's real information.
Is there a question involved with that?
No, that was that was basically. I've I've heard the question asked a lot, and it's never been answered. So I'm just gonna get, that was just a little bit of, it's not a question. So I'm just gonna get, that was just a little bit of, it's not a question.
The question of what, what are provided for, you know, what are, what's your question?
No, that was, no, I, I got it. It was just a comment. Cause it's a public comment, so there's comment and question. So most of my stuff were questions, but this is a comment. I'll have follow ups to these too, when I get the answers, um, because I just wanna make sure that I get the answers. And a lot of people don't get the answers, and especially that last one I just said. That's all.
Appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room have comments? See no hands. Uh, Amanda, anyone online?
Yes, you have two hands online, uh, Annie and Jason.
We'll start with Annie.
Hi, Annie Bradwick, 50 Taylor Avenue.
Great.
Um, thank you. I just wanna go on record to say I also, we also did not receive, um, the certified mail in any timely fashion. Um, and I submitted a letter. Thank you for acknowledging that. Would I also be able to have that read by somebody in the meeting?
Sure. Yes, we can. We, we read the other one, we will read that one.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments before we get to that?
No, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Dear members of Planning and zoning commission, I am ready to express, express my deep concerns regarding the proposed 26 unit development at 53 Taylor Ave. As a resident of this small tight knit neighborhood, I feel compelled to address the potential health, safety and infrastructure challenges this project may impose on our community. Taylor Ave is a quiet narrow street, barely wide enough for two vehicles to pass in certain sections, especially in the proposed construction cycle. I encourage any and all of you to drive up and down Taylor Ave when a school bus is dropping off or picking up students. Good luck. Additionally, I have personally witnessed three accidents at the bend on Taylor Ave, one of which included a former student of mine. The addition of approximately 45 vehicles based on the assumption of 1.75 cars per unit up to this road for daily errands and commuting will create significant traffic congestion. With our plans to develop walking infrastructure or alternate transit solutions, this project risks worsening the livability and safety of my neighborhood. My family and I walk to and from town each week. Quite frankly, it's harrowing. That said, we do exercise sustains, sustainability and give to business to the shops we love downtown. With or without a project on Taylor, 53 Taylor Ave, the town should find it absolutely incumbent upon itself to provide safe passage for bikers and pedestrians on our road. Additionally, I am alarmed by the extensive excavation, soil removal and planned detonation required to prepare the lot for development. Similar work in this area has already demonstrated the severe impact on our community. For instance, runoff issues. Previous excavation caused a major runoff problem during the winter requiring the town intervention and mitigation the following year. Well disruption. A nearby family lost access to their well jeopardizing their ability to meet basic needs. Is it ours? Question mark. If so, can we afford that? Air quality concerns. Dust from the site work negatively affect neighborhood air quality posing risk to health of our children and vulnerable residents. Taylor Ave is full of, the street full of kids. I can't imagine that this liability that the town wants to wade into. The long-term consequences of this type of development combined with immediate health and safety risks during construction cannot be ignored. Without careful planning and consideration of the impact on infrastructure and the well-being of current residents, this project feels regressive and out of alignment with sustainable town growth. I urge the board to thoroughly evaluate these concerns and may consider or revise the project to ensure that it benefits both new residents and the existing community. Thoughtful development should pride prioritize health, safety and preservation of Bethel's unique character. On a personal level, my family is extremely frustrated by the proposal to bring a sewer line up Taylor Ave to accommodate this project. Make no mistake, we are not dismayed by expanding access to public utilities. The town should view this as its right and responsibility to provide safe living conditions for its residents. What is of concern is the painstaking process that my family went through to construct our modest home addition, which by objective measures is, is a value added proposition for the town and our neighborhood on Taylor Ave at the hands of the Bethel, Bethel Health Department. The Health Department demanded multiple revisions to our plan to modify our septic system, finally suggesting a design that costed over 30,000 to implement in order for our project to be approved. I should hope that the Health Department is prepared to scrutinize the proposal on 53 Taylor with the same intensity and heavy handedness of government oversight as they did for us. Lastly, I ask the commission to challenge a notion that develops and developers and engineers are often referenced when proposing projects in our town. There's a focus on what they can do with a lot of people, with a lot or piece of property versus what they should do with that same property. I think, I'd like to think that my family and I live in a community that is governed by principles more sacred than the almighty dollar. Principles rooted in shared interest, respect, and the idea that the town is more than a collection of dwellings. We absolutely have legitimate health and safety concerns with this project. Period, full stop. But when we have ethical concerns that I hope the developers are willing to listen to and respect. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I'm available to discuss my concerns further if needed and will appreciate any updates regarding the proposal. Annie Budwick and the Budwick family, 50 Taylor Ave, in Bethel, Connecticut.
Thank you. All right, uh, Amanda?
Uh, yeah, Jason has his hand up and, um, one other person, I'm sorry, I might put your name wrong. Her aunt, Nora?
Nora.
There, yeah, so you have two, two people.
Jason, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. Uh, this is Jason Haslob. Uh, I have a couple of concerns that I wanted to bring up. Um, one is, is.
I'm sorry, Jason, what's your address?
I'm sorry, I'm at 52 Taylor diagonally across from the proposed site. Um, oh, uh, second to all the comments and concerns that other, my other neighbors have made, uh, regarding the safety and, uh, um, environmental concerns in particular, um, as well as the water table. My well is, is particularly sus- suspect. Uh, I understand, uh, running public utilities up the road provides an opportunity, but uh, it also provides an additional expense that I don't currently have, nor do I really prefer to be on, uh, city water versus well water. Um, and, uh, to be forced to do so would not be, uh, something that I would, I would appreciate very much, truthfully. Um, so I definitely would, uh, survey to make sure that, um, the water table won't be impacted and we won't have drainage or, uh, well, well issues. My understanding is my well was very fragile in the first place and very hard to, to find. If I lose water, I probably will not be able to find it again on this property. Um, additionally, again, I'm diagonally across the road. Uh, we've had dumpsters, uh, delivered. Uh, they had to limit the size of the dumpster due to the narrowness of the road. They can't make a proper turn into our driveways, uh, because of how narrow the road is. Um, so I don't know how they, uh, they would be able to do this without widening the road and there's not enough, a lot, a significant amount of room to do that without really impacting other people's properties. Um, as well as the wear and tear that, the amount of removing that amount and the number of trucks that would have to come through, uh, would, uh, have on the road as it is. Again, it's nar- narrow and, uh, it's old. Um, additionally, I mean, my, my kids, uh, walking up and down this road, we have a nice neighborhood, uh, might up and down the road to, to visit neighbors. Again, to everyone else's concern, there's already a significant amount of traffic on this road. Additional cars, uh, coming up and down just further make that risk. There, there isn't a lot of room for sidewalks by the nature of the way the road is cut. Um, so you would have to walk on the road if you're gonna walk at all. Um, and it's a risk for the children especially. Um, my house in particular, the foundation was poured on natural rock. So any blasting, uh, last time the blasting was enough that we had pictures falling off of the walls, uh, and that was around the corner. This is significantly closer. Uh, again, it, but part of my foundation is poured on natural rock. It's not, I don't have a full basement, uh, especially due to that. My house was built in the forties. Um, so it's especially liable to, uh, what impacts that blasting might have. And I need assurances that I won't have structural damage due to blasting at such a close proximity, uh, given the, the nature of how my foundation is poured. Um, and, and one other, it's essentially just a comment more than anything else. Uh, when I had purchased this property back in 2007, I had especially looked at zoning to see what kind of neighborhood I was gonna be raising my family in. And avoiding neighborhoods that had potentiality to have developments such as this put into it intentionally, because I wanted a neighborhood for my children. Um, I understand, you know, uh, uh, these projects do need to take place and have to exist. Uh, we already have two of them within less than a half a mile of this house, um, or of the proposed site. Um, and, and have already incurred all the increased traffic and, uh, all the, like I say, the, the wherewithal from, uh, from the construction that has happened. To throw another one, and especially one of this size in, is borderline irresponsible, quite honestly, uh, in my opinion. Um, and again, if, if I had, uh, understood that that was a potentiality when I, I, I don't know that, I would have purchased this house. Um, I specifically looked at zoning and, uh, um, did not consider that this was even a, something that would I would ever have to, uh, address. So that would be the end of my comments. Uh, again, to everyone else's, uh, I did not have really time to, uh, put anything formal together just from the, the lack of notice. Um, but I would appreciate more time to be able to do so.
Thank you, Jason. Honora O'Neil, um, would like to go?
Please excuse how my voice sounds. If you can hear me at all, hopefully. Um, I, my name is Honora O'Neil. I am at 54 Taylor Avenue. I did not receive the required certified letter, uh, nor did anyone else in the household previously. Um, I have also submitted a written letter. I, I don't require you to read it cause it addresses many of the same things that are covered here. It does however, have one other concern that has not been addressed at all. To my knowledge, and I only had so much time to investigate what the actual status of this is, there is a super fun site at Vanderbilt, which is closed. It is a groundwater site. Uh, it is a stable groundwater site that's contaminated with arsenic and selenium. Um, blasting could potentially destabilize that site, so then it then becomes groundwater intrusion. Um, it was safely contained. So far as I know, it is not on the national priorities list because it has effectively been retired because they were basically said, okay, it is contained. Um, they do have to remit, make reports to DEEP. Uh, because of the short notice, I really couldn't go dig around DEEP's website to go find the exact information about its current status, um, as to what's going on. But I would like that to be specifically addressed by a geoengineer, um, about that site, what Vanderbilt has done in between and whether or not it is in fact safely contained if there's blasting that can destabilize the underground bedrock because it is directly behind this property. So it is gonna travel through that, that big chunk of rock there and potentially do that, destabilize that. So that's my real concern that was not otherwise addressed. But I did leave a letter that's in, should be in the, um, the, the Google Docs form and that, that will be all.
Thank you, Honora. Amanda, it doesn't look like there's anyone else?
No, no other hands are raised.
All right, well, uh, before we get to the responses, we'll start with commission comments.
Well, before you do that, can I just clarify something for the record? And I'm looking at my phone, if anybody wants to look at it, more than welcome to. But Steve did send, uh, some letters.
The, maybe, maybe I should.
And it's, and the date was January, it looks like 21st.
It was the 20th. Uh, the 18th, I went to the post office, uh, 10 days before and missed getting in there by literally minutes. I lost my.
This is stamped 21st.
Okay, so it's the 21st, but I mailed them the next available day, first thing in the morning. It's a certificate of mailing, which is equivalent to the green cards, uh, that we used to be used. Um, I cannot be responsible for the slowness of the post office, but I will tell you, uh, I had clients mail checks to me in early December from Ridgefield that I have yet to receive. So their, their postal service, uh, mail from, you know, Southbury to come to Bethel is like going to New Jersey and coming back. Um, and, but they were mailed up, you know, that, that day, um, first thing in the morning, nine o'clock to a hundred feet around the subject site based on the town GIS mapping.
And let me just clarify a little bit more to that, in regards to that. It is something that you can take under consideration, but court, court of law has said, well, if as long as that an attempt is made to, for due notice by the applicant and there is evidence here that that was made, um, it's not something that really can be challenged in the, in the courts.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add before the commission comments?
I would just go to commission comments for this evening.
Ken?
Um, looks like we got a school of things to investigate here. My rough calculations, let me know if I'm off on this, but it looks like about a thousand dump truck loads are gonna be leaving the property?
I will have to ask my client. I, I don't know what.
Seventeen to nineteen thousand yards.
Some of the material can be used as road base.
Eighteen yards per load?
Well, I'll, I'll look into it.
I'm just saying.
I'll look into it. I don't have a, a number, but some of the material, the blasted rock will be used around storm tech system, around the driveways, backfilling foundations, so.
Yeah, I think we should really find out what that is. Thanks.
Anything else, Ken? Kenny?
Well, I, I just, I, I really need you to, uh, address these letters. Uh, it's very important to me that the, the, the experts that are required are, are very necessary and, and we need, this is, the, the project you're, yeah, I must, we're about to go, this is not regular plant, laying as many rules. He says what we call A32. This is a state rule. He can't, they, they've got Africanist come in with this, uh, state project that will, that's, goes over our rules. But, um, but still with all, with all the problems, and, and this is, this is a massive project for a very, very small area. Uh, I, I think the, the, uh, no, I can't remember the names of it. Come on, here we go. Um, oh my God, please, I'm sorry. To have, have somebody come for the excavation, uh, and, and the traffic study. I, I, in all my years on planning and zoning, I have not seen a, a letter this size with this many problems from the police department. I can understand it because of the amount of traffic you're putting probably off this one small area. And am I correct? Did I hear you say that all of the affordables will be in one building?
No, no, there's three ADA.
Yeah, but I thought you said that they would be in that one building right there.
Because they're on ground floor units and the right, left, they're coming right up from parking lot. So these are ADA compliant units. There'll be an 80% affordable, there'll be a 60% affordable.
I realize.
And a market, one market rate on the ground floor for the ADA, you know, requirements. The other eight dash thirty T, the other five, we have to provide eight of them, will be spread out within the other buildings. But the, the handicap accessibles are all right in one building.
And, and, and I totally disagree with you with this fire department letter. Uh, I, I've been on this commission in 32 years. And what is going on right now with the, with the fire department requesting more availability is because number one, you have two, two story buildings, you have, you have ladder trucks going in and it, it, it's much more important that we become aware of the possibilities and that there are, it is definitely marked how they can, that ladder trucks can just, cannot always just back up. They may need more room and more availability for space. And I would really like you to check into that. I know, and you haven't been to the health department letters or the other letters yet either. So, uh, this, this is gonna be going on and, and I, and I look forward to hearing your comments. Thank you.
Diane?
I, I'm concerned about the safety and health of the neighborhood. And I think a lot of questions need to be answered. Um, I also was concerned when I saw Vanderbilt chemical was nearby. Um, I think that's a real important thing to check out. And the GO. Um, so I think that's a real important thing to check out. And the geo technical, I think it's very key as well as all the other issues.
Agreed. Rule?
Not to take everybody's time, so I have the same concerns and more. Um, having been personally involved in a number of projects with blasting and the effects that are, that are unpredictable. Uh, there's quite a number of questions that need to be answered.
Agreed. Uh, Mr. Legnar?
Uh, no questions at this time. I'll wait to hear some of the replies to some of our, uh, expert testimonies.
Okay, Jeff? Jeff, you're muted.
Yep, I'm muted, sorry. Um, yeah, I have this, a lot of the same concerns, um, especially about the traffic and that, you know, that elbow ninety-degree turn in there just seems impossible to have. You know, forty more vehicles every single day going up and down that road where there's no sidewalks as well. So that, that's a really, really, uh, concern of mine. Um, I have a question for Beth. Beth, this is our ten zone. So if this was not an eight thirty G project, what, what type of development would be allowed on this premises?
Um, just looking, uh, barely recalling the frontage and stuff. You, you would have two single-family homes possibly. It's two point four seven acres. So maybe there's, if you did a subdivision, depending on the steep slopes, um, you may be able to get four lots in there, but I doubt it very much because you have to deduct steep slope. So I would say safely, you could put two residential units in there.
As I was, one of the public comment was, um, you know, they left up his own and they had, uh, you know, understood the, the code, but now eight thirty G swoops in and it seems like you can do whatever you want to do. Um, and, and a question for the applicant, is there a, any type of plan uh, for developing this property without blasting?
Uh, there really isn't, Jeff, as the outcrop is literally right behind the existing house. Um, uh, there's really not any option, you know, except to really remove it to do anything. Um, there's not a lot of flat land otherwise.
Um, Maybe even with the, where the current house is, to take that down and put in six or eight units instead of twenty-six?
It's not something we considered. I'll, I'll bring it up to the client.
Okay.
Um, anything else, Jeff?
No, thanks.
Um, I echo everybody on the commission's comments, concerns, as well as the, uh, the public here. Um, like's rule in my experience when dealing with blasting, um, you know, we've, we've, we've been required to, uh, again, this comes from a geotechnical engineer, so I, I strongly emerge and, and what, what SLR was requesting was a geotechnical engineer involved with this. I've been involved with projects where you have to go around and inspect everybody's basements and structure, right? And it's a high cost to the applicant, but that would become on the recommendation of the geotech engineer, um, something to consider here. Um, and as far as traffic engineer too, uh, again, I, I agree with just the street. It's just, those two engineers are, are crucial for this type of project, if it is at all feasible. Um,
And can you answer that for tonight, Steve?
It is standard practice of blasting companies under the fire marshal to do pre-blast surveys of not only adjacent homes, but of any neighbor in the area that requests it.
Well, we're not even there yet. We're just talking about a geotech.
Yeah. And attorney Marcus, um, Neil's.
So you can't give us an answer today?
I can't. I need to talk to them.
Okay. All right. So you need to talk to them about that. You need to talk to them in regards to the police. Um, I'm hoping that maybe you can get back to us within a week. Again, because I, I don't like things to keep going on and on and on. Quick results.
Attorney Marcus until probably Monday sees away this week, but I will send him an email. And maybe since he's on vacation, maybe he'll get back.
Or talk to your clients too.
But I will talk.
And if your client wishes, be more than happy to talk to him on behalf of the board. They know how to reach you.
And I just want to echo one thing Kitty said too about the fire apparatus. Every, every project, and this is commercial of nature, the amount of units is always required. Turn radiuses. And I understand that maybe that hasn't been in the past, but that's how we're doing it moving forward, so.
Let me just say in regards to that, as far as turning radiuses and things of that nature, maybe Steve hasn't done, um, major condominium projects or things of that nature, but I can recall back in two thousand and five or six, whatever it was, dealing with twelve brothers somewhere as four three, and turning radiuses and things of that nature. And that was sixty units.
Actually, I stay away from large condominiums.
Well, that's why you're not familiar with the changes.
But, but it's also. So before you had to see standard templates, you know, and then auto turn and then auto desk now have turning programs, but they never did. So, you know, now they do. So, and they want, they charge a lot for them.
Would you like to respond to anything else or are you gonna take all the information?
Continue and we'll respond to all the staff's comments in one memo with revised plan.
Okay, we'll continue this public hearing. Just note, uh, the public hearing will not continue next. It won't be until February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. That will be the next time this will be heard. Okay?
And you will not get, and you will not get a notice or anything in the mail. So if you have any questions, call the office.
Okay.
Have you responded to the question tonight? It'll be on the Google?
No, there will be no responses on the Google tribe. There will be a trust at the next hearing for this matter, which is February twenty-third.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll be waiting for them till.
Okay, good. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your support. The next meeting, yes, yes, you are. Still a public. Oh, absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth, we need a five-minute break. Amanda, can you, we're gonna take a five-minute break, please, and then we'll come back and finish up the meeting.
Okay, um, uh, that needs to be a motion. Yeah, but to, uh, sorry, who, I missed it.
Bob, Bob made a motion. All in favor?
Okay, uh, recording has started.
All right.
So you have everything.
All right, we are gonna move on to our business meeting. Um, and I'm going, oh, I don't see anyone right now. Um, has everyone had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Yes. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I don't either.
Which minute?
I'm sorry. This is the meeting minutes for our, uh, good question, the January fourteenth, uh, hearing. We'll start with that one.
Motion to accept January fourteenth minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Uh, now we'll move on to the special hearing we did, uh, meeting minutes from January twenty-third. Anyone have any comments or questions? No?
I listened to both of them, the fourteenth and the twenty-third.
Great. All right, I want to make a motion.
I make a motion except the minutes of January twenty-third, twenty-five.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All righty.
So we lost Eric, right?
All right, uh, we did, and I told, uh, I told Amanda. Um, before we get to the work session, I want to, um, we have to take a vote to add something to the work.
Yes, you do.
All right, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to add, uh, twenty Trow Bridge, uh, to the work section. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any sentences? All right. Okay, we will move on to, uh, Tim Draper, eight thirty G affordable housing, six units at nine Hart Road. Paul, you recuse yourself?
Yes, I'm refused from this application.
Okay, uh, Amanda, I'm gonna sit Jeff DeRosa for Paul Stanley. Thank you. And that is, uh, refused. Uh, David, I will hand it over to you. I know you emailed us all at the end of the day today with a resolution letter of a conditions of.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I do have that available to put on the, uh, to share on the, uh, screen. If the commission would like to, uh, briefly introduce that again.
We have copies.
Um, I'm gonna just, we have the copies physically here. Uh, Mr. Legnar, Jeff, uh,
I read it.
Do you have any comments or questions about it?
Oh, I don't.
Jeff, did you get a chance to read it?
I did not. Is it on the Google Drive?
He emailed it.
It is not on the, it, I, I did email it to you. Um, I, I think if, if, uh, it wouldn't be, uh, too much an issue to have that shit on the screen, uh, while we discuss and I'll have it scrolled so that way you guys, so that way everybody can see, uh, what was emailed to you guys, uh, this afternoon.
All right, that sounds good, David. Please share the screen.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes. If possible, zoom in a little bit. There you go.
That's good.
So what we'll do is I'll have this scrolling as we discuss. Uh, Attorney Andres, uh, Director of, uh, Public Health Law Viseo, uh, Todd Ritchie with SLR International Corporation and Chris Palowski with Civil One are also available in the event that the commission has any, uh, questions about any of the draft conditions or the language that's in this draft.
Mr. Chairman, I can just summarize what it is. It's basically the, the commission directed us to file a, uh, a resolution of approval with conditions. The, the first page that's being scrolled through now is just sort of the background and history of where it's a resubmission application. What the changes were from the first one and, and why the commission believes they have been addressed or can be addressed through conditions. So that's basically the first page and then basically most of the second page and the third pages, which you're getting to now, are the actual conditions. And just to break them down, there were two of them from public health. One is the one about the requirement that they obtain, uh, the, the permit from, for the sewage disposal from the, from the local director of public health. And if they can't work it out, then the applicant would have the right to appeal. So that was what was suggested by Neil Marcus and that was a good idea. The second one was regarding the size of the dumpster. We had some discussion about that. Those are the two from health. Todd Ritchie had the next five. There were just some fairly, um, minor, uh, weren't too significant. They, they, uh, in terms of plan changes, but they were, did address some health and safety issues about the size of the slope and some drainage issues and so forth. Um, and, uh, they, they, they're subject, there's some caveats that if there's issues with DOT disagreeing or the local uh, health, uh, you know, disagreeing, the, the local traffic disagreeing, then that, you know, that, that can be modified. So tho, those were the next five. And then the, the last, I, I think there was the one that Dave recommended, that was number eight. That was, again, you gotta hear from the, from the fire apparatus, from the fire department. So that's where that one came from. And then the last ten basically are standard, just either, they're, they're, they're just confirming compliance with eight thirty G, that you file your affordability plan correctly, that you comply with the site plan and fairly standard items. So that's kind of what, that, that, that's the summary of, of what the conditions are about.
Thank you, Attorney Andrews. Uh, commission comments, Ken? No comments. No comments. Kitty?
No comments.
Diane?
I had mentioned to Dave, uh, about having the, um, existing home re-armed. And whether anything like that has to be in here about how that's done with.
Um,
I don't know. And then, um, I don't know whether, I haven't read through this whole thing, but they had, um, a, in their landscape plan, they had um, trees that are now gonna be on the invasive list. So it's getting adjusted.
Good, David?
If, if I may speak briefly, I, I don't want to speak to, uh, uh, the, the abatement process. If, if there are any, um, items of, of note that, that will be part of the demolition process for the existing house. I, I, I do believe that there is a demolition permit that would have to be sought by, uh, the owner of the property to, to, um, to demo, to demolish the house that's there. Um, a, a, and, uh, if there's any, if I, if I'm misspeaking, uh, I'd, I'd be happy to be corrected. But that's, that's how I understand that.
Correct.
So, so those, so those codes and, uh, that, those review processes would take place as, as part of those processes with those respective departments.
Agreed, David.
That sounds good.
Uh, Diane, one other comment?
About the trees.
The landscaping?
Yeah, we hadn't brought it up the last meeting, at the special meeting. Trees?
Just her clarification, Diane. Are we talking about the area down below from the neighbor?
No.
Where Mr. Draper had said that he would allow them
No.
In perpetuity, ashes and we said that's.
No, I think what she's referring to is a previous landscaping plan had Bradford pears on it.
Right.
That is a now, that are invasive species. And we want to make sure that there are no invasive species in the landscape.
Right. And then the other thing was that they said that they would work out with the neighbor. Um, leaving those trees, even though they're on their property. So I don't know whether that's needed. Sometimes we have something where it's, it's approved and they're gonna, you know, it's not done with, like Wells Fargo, that whole situation where they didn't end up giving, you know, getting that additional land. So.
I don't know if I can. I don't think you can right now.
I don't either. I was just gonna, I could answer some questions for you if you wanted to ask. That's why I'm here.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I think the, the applicant in the past did, you know, it.
Neil did say that they could work that out.
Discussed it.
But that's not, yeah, it's been discussed, but it's not, but it's not, I don't think it's a, it's a condition that would be.
It's not, I don't think it's a conditional approval either. And it's also, you're, you're really protecting the applicant, which is great, more so than the people who are
Well, the.
Using his property right now.
But the dumpster is over by them. So.
Understood.
I know, but the dumpster is by their property, isn't it?
I know. But it's gonna be screened in, so as, as they said, as Laura stated, so I think that's gonna be fine.
As far as the invasive species on landscape plan, um, David, is that, is, is Attorney Andrews, is that something that we can just add as a note that any, any landscaping used, uh, is to not be, uh, species from an invasive species list?
I, I think you could add a condition that the Bradford pear be replaced by a non-invasive species, if that's the issue.
Let's, let's do that.
I think that number was nineteen, nineteen.
I don't.
Yeah.
What's the logical place to put that?
I don't, I don't know. David, what do you think?
I, I, it's, it's not my position to say, i- i- it's, it's, it seems to be a discussion point that's being generated by the commission. So i- i- if, if you're looking for, uh, a, a replacement in kind, I'm not sure, uh, what, what the commission's in, uh, thoughts would be in, in terms of the size or the number of, of, of whatever would be replaced by the Bradford pear. You, you may want to hash that out as part of this discussion.
How about just a good faith upper?
He just asked me the question.
How about if we request a, a matching, uh, plan for, for replacement of the Bradford pears? Without stating the number or without stating a, a type of what we're gonna replace it with. It's a matching number with non-invasive.
Yeah, I, I hear you saying, I think we just say we're like to what Attorney Andrews is saying is replace the Bradford pear with a. Well, I'm not giving them a non-invasive. I just wanna, I just wanna give them a, say it's non-invasive species.
You're so least.
Would, would it be that the commission's intent to have the, the, then be planted in the same location as where the Bradford pears were?
I just wanna know where we should put it into the, into the comments here. We have one through nineteen.
Number nineteen.
Let's make it number nineteen and let's write it out now and we'll read it into the record. Uh, number nineteen, um, all proposed.
Bradford pear should be removed. Landscape plan shall not include any invasive species.
I know. You, you want to be specific about what that is.
I.e. Bradford pear replaced with.
Land state.
The landscape plan shall be revised to remove the Bradford pear, put in parentheses invasive species parentheses, and replace it with
Non-invasive.
Non-invasive species of similar size.
Great. Number.
Dave, can you, can you write that in there?
Yes, if, 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 if someone, uh, I, I'm not sure if, if someone's scribbling that down in the meeting room, but, but if you, if that's left, then that will be added to the funnel.
Yes. The plan shall be revised to remove the Bradford pear, uh, parentheses invasive species with, and then I got with, with non-invasive.
Of similar size.
And with of similar size.
Maybe we can put some cactus in there.
I don't think that's the appropriate zone. Won't survive. Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Does anyone else have any more, uh, school?
Yes. So there was comment made about the neighbors are using a piece of the applicant's land that the applicant said he doesn't have a problem. He's gonna grant them that we wanted to have something documented to protect the neighbors. Because the ownership can change. You get a new owner of the, of the development and the whole thing goes up in smoke.
And Neil said he was taking care of that. So. Now.
Protect the neighbors, but so, so the neighbor is encroaching on, on the applicant's property. So are you, by doing so, you're just giving the neighbor free property. So I think.
Are, are need access easement or something of, of that nature, but it was discussed. There was a need to document that.
Does anyone else have comments about that?
Do we really want to just leave it the way it is? And, and, and if property changed hands, that they would have to
No.
Uh, work about in court or lawyers.
Well, see, what, what you're, you're missing Diane is not, this is integral to this development. This is, the applicant is letting that person use it. They could tomorrow, today, without this approval, go say, stop using my property. We, we don't have the right to give any property to, more property to the neighbor or put it in writing. That's not part of this application.
Can you just verify that with Chuck? I think that'll put an end to the.
Chuck, is that, is what I said true there or am I?
Yeah, I, I would not. That, that's a private issue between two property owners. There were public statements made on the record. I think that's it. It, it really has nothing to do with the proposed development.
That's my point.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to get heated, but I, I don't, I don't see it as
Yeah.
Part of the application or the.
That's between owners.
Bob, I'm sorry, school, any other questions?
No, that's it.
Bob?
I'm good.
Jeff?
No comments.
Okay. Um, so this is my first one doing this. So I, I make a motion to approve. Do I have to read this whole thing?
No. Yeah, just at the beginning and then number one through nineteen.
Just the beginning. There's a page and a half of.
No, no, that's, that's the, you want the whole, you don't want the whole history of that, do you?
No, 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 I'll read the first, the first paragraph. Okay. I will make a motion to approve, uh, the Draper eight thirty G nine Putnam Park Road, uh, approval with conditions that that's the planning and zoning commission adopts the following memorandum decision as its collective statement of reasons concerning the resubmission application filed by Tim Draper, Draper, or the applicant pursuant to the Connecticut general statutes eight thirty GH following the commission's denial of the applicant's initial application on July ninth, twenty twenty four for a six unit two residential building development at nine Putnam Park Road. For the reasons set forth herein, the application is approved with conditions one through nineteen with nineteen, I'm gonna read that in just because we wrote it, being the landscape plan shall be revised to remove the Bradford pear invasive species with non-invasive species of similar size.
Segment.
We'll go, we have to go by individual?
No.
Yes.
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 Yes, do a roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yes, Ken.
Uh, Mike, yes.
Yes.
Diane, yes.
School, yes.
Uh, Bob?
Bob Legner, yes.
Jeff DeRosa?
Jeff DeRosa, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll probably be back because I'm not gonna agree to the stipulations. So we're probably gonna be doing this again. Okay. Thank you.
Did the motion pass unanimously?
Yes.
Want to just stake that for the rest?
Yep, motion passed unanimously. Okay.
Now. Well, for being part of this, please go and enjoy the rest of your evening.
We have one more.
No, I'm, I'm speaking to the experts.
That's all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck, Laura, Todd, and Chris.
Good night, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night, Chris. Good night, Todd.
Okay, Beth. Thank you, Beth. Have a good night, all.
Good night, Dave.
Okay. Part of the work session, uh, we had is the agenda. I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring Paul back in. We have to unseat Jeff.
I'm here.
No, you don't have to unseat him.
Yeah, ask Commander Shes.
I'll just, I'll just say that Paul came back.
I've been reseated.
Yeah.
All right. So, uh, moving on to, uh, vintage and classic site plan for twenty Probridge. Uh, we have a resolution of approval from staff.
It was my understanding as part of the last hearing, you all kind of did a little feel-good consensus as far as the application was concerned. So I took it upon myself if the hearing went through and they finished the engineer, that you wish to have a resolution, a draft resolution to look at this.
Okay. Can I make a motion?
Please.
To approve a site plan for special permit for vintage and classic on property located at twenty Probridge Drive consisting of a twenty-nine thousand seven hundred square foot building and associated amenities for restoration and flash storage of vintage and classic cars under section four dot three dot K dot five of the zoning regulations shown on the site plan and, excuse me, entitled Legacy Overland prepared by Cole Civil survey engineering dated eleven eight twenty-four, last three lines, one twenty-two twenty-five, and architectural drawings by Hartford Architecture Partners, Inc., dated eleven thirteen twenty-four, with the fine conditions one to five. Reason in granting this approval, the planning and zoning commission states the proposed project is in substantial performance of the zoning regulations and the plan of conservation and development is a town of Bethel and the project will not have detrimental effect on neighboring properties or in the development of surrounding districts.
Sorry. All right, we'll do a roll call. Ken?
Yes.
Mike, yes.
Kitty, yes.
Diane, yes.
School, yes.
Mr. Legnar?
Yes.
Paul?
Paul Shanley, yes.
Uh, is approved unanimously.
Okay, next on the agenda is a twenty-four referral board of selecting utilities expansion on fifty-three Taylor Avenue. At the request of somebody with the last meeting, this was a twenty-four by Public Utilities with the request to expand sewer and water in an existing sewer district. It shows on the map in the town of Bethel, it's being in the sewer district. Anytime that there is an expansion request, it goes to the Board of, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission for review. It is not, uh, uh, it is not written in stone. You are reporting to the Board of Selectmen with your recommendation, yes, expand the sewer and water or no.
Can I ask you something?
Just asking the question.
Why can't we make a recommendation to go all the way up the street? And just be done with it?
Well, because if I understand this correctly, the applicant for fifty-three Taylor is responsible bringing it to their.
Yeah.
But then are you gonna make them bring it all the way up?
No, just.
Oh.
Forget it.
Can you do that?
The town pays for it then, right?
Cause you gotta.
No, they, they, it's part of their development cost.
Uh, we had to, we had sewer put in our street, no, the town, no, the, the, uh, people who live there paid for it.
Right.
No, but what he's saying is, if you want, can you say, let's keep it going? We recommend, yeah, yeah, I agree with that. If you want to do it.
Yeah, if they want it.
Who's doing it?
They are.
They, meaning the.
The applicant.
Yeah, can't talk.
Isn't it premature?
This is the recommendation. It's not a mandate.
Isn't, isn't.
Well, I think if we, Michael, if we recommend to bring the sewer all the way up, I think the public utilities then could say, okay, but we're only gonna bring it as far as.
Yeah. But we can make the recommendation, can't we?
We can make the recommendation to bring it all the way up. They don't have to listen to us as far as that goes because in effect we are recommending what they asked for and above.
Well, come, let's just talk about, it, this is our opportunity to potentially increase the value of these houses that are already going through this, bringing it all the way up the hill. No other way. The town's not gonna, it's in this district, but when's the next time the town's gonna say, yeah, you know what? I'm gonna voluntarily bring it up there.
And, and how many houses are, you know, what is, what is the number of units involved? Is the town ever gonna, if say there's ten, eight to ten houses?
It's not worth it.
Are they gonna do it?
The condo complex, are they, um?
Yeah.
They are.
Yeah, they went through the woods.
Oh, great. That's right. Well, I'm just saying, just, I'm just.
I'm all, I like that idea.
Just a discussion, that's all.
Where is that?
Doesn't mean it's gonna go anywhere.
In relation to the rocks.
Well, that's around past the rocks, right? So the rocks, they're already agreed that they would, they would in good case work on improving the sightlines. It's only one small part of the police report. How far does sewer district go? Do we just say like, we recommend that they bring the line to the end of the sewer district? Like, how far does the sewer district map go?
It's, it's convoluted to a degree because it comes in from two different areas. I think the water comes in from Nashville Road and there's an easement there. Um, uh, because remember Good Hill as well.
Yeah.
There's a hole. So it comes in Nashville where the water is. The sewer line comes down from the intersection of Nashville and, uh, from, uh, Nashville. So coming down.
How many houses are on Good Hill?
Oh, I don't know. Twenty.
Oh, it's.
Uh, no, um.
Ten, twelve?
Twenty-five.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
Paul?
Beth, question. Did, did I just hear you correctly that the sewer comes from the Nashville side? And then the water comes up Taylor Road or Taylor Avenue?
The opposite.
It's, it, the water comes in, there's an easement in there somewheres that comes in from Nashville.
And where's the sewer?
So they're gonna have to tear the road up from both ends is what you're saying.
Oh, yeah.
There is, we're already on D Hill.
Really? They're bringing the water line down?
No, they're bringing everything up. They're bringing it up from Drapers, forty-nine Taylor. So they're gonna bring the water in the sewer line?
From there.
Up there. Right. So.
I mean, doesn't bringing water all the way up and connecting it also solve, not that I'm in favor or not, that, not talking about that. But bringing water, at least access to water for everyone, pretty good thing. If they're digging the trench.
If the access to the water and sewer is. I'm sorry, if the access to sewer and water is already in the street for anyone on Taylor Ave that may or may not have problems in the future, at least they have the option to hook into it. And, uh, instead of having to take on the, I mean, they have to pay for it, but they wouldn't have to do their own repairs, if that makes sense.
Okay, so they'll be doing that works. They won't do, so say it costs somebody two hundred grand to bring the line up, there would be a charge back to the property owner. Besides the hookup, they, the, whoever brought the lining could charge them back twenty-five grand to do, pay for the.
The town charge does.
Or you're, so the applicant can backcharge?
Yeah. I think, you know, what would be helpful is if I had, um, Tom Vila chime in on this.
Well, that's a good idea. Yes, thank you.
Get him in there.
Let's, let's, I'll get him to zoom in at the next meeting because they don't meet till February eighteenth, I think. So we do still have. I hate to speak freely, you know, I'm confident in what I'm telling you.
No, but you'll go right to the source. I agree. So let's, let's just do that. Let's have.
We get less than one oh one on.
Yeah, it's like thirty, thirty-five houses that we're talking about here, so. All right, that's good.
All right. So we'll table it till the next meeting.
I, I, yeah, you, you have time to table it because, uh, probably you've told you that they're gonna make a decision on it uh, until they get a reference from us.
No, they're not gonna, they're not gonna make a, they're not meeting till the eighteenth, Bob, so we're okay.
Great. We have time before our next meeting.
Our next meeting will see eleven.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Good.
I'm a hundred percent for that.
No, I think that's a great idea.
And school, thank you for pushing this meeting. Otherwise, I wouldn't have this discussion. I'm being serious.
Yeah, I agree.
Jeff was on it too. Jeff wanted to table it. Correct, Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, um.
Planner report?
Planner's report, report is, is, is very minimal, very busy in the office, um, with certain things going on, um, nothing that's coming into the board at this time. Um, and, uh, I had, I can't think of anything at the moment.
Great. Commission comments? Ken?
No.
Kitty?
Moving on to moratorium.
That was my comment. I know you're just waiting patiently.
I'm just waiting.
Okay, waiting, um, state or council lawyer.
Or council. She's been in touch with me and due to, you know, circumstances of this week and stuff, I, you know. She can't, I, I guess apparently there was an article in the paper on Saturday or Sunday or something.
Yes.
And, and Melanie did reach out to me this week.
Yeah.
So we're trying to make it work.
Okay.
So when you say ninety days, it's ninety days.
It's, it's gonna be six months.
That long?
Yes. There's all this legal noticing and things of that nature that has to be completed. State gets ninety days. I mean, I'm, I, you know, it's all a statutory thing and that's why I really I'm, I'm not in a good place right now, but that's okay. We'll get there. I wanted to get there before I.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Um, Diane, any comments?
Um, the demolition thing of houses that we were talking about a long time ago at school was I asked a few times too. Um, did you have a look into?
Oh, that was resolved.
I don't.
You, it may have been traveling that day. The, correct me if I'm wrong on this resolution. Uh, where we get into situations like that, the applicant will be required to have an engineer, which will be on us. And the, our engineer then will make an, uh, an evaluation and assessment of what the condition is, not just the foundation, but the building system and vitality. And, uh, I presume that the applicant will reimburse the engineer.
Correct. That's how it works.
So you have something.
Similar to our, uh, transportation engineer.
That's part of our regulation.
It's part of our regulations that we refer out and have consultants at staff.
I, I know it's nine o'clock. We have passed nine o'clock. I have a question, more accurate, I'll say anything else. Construction improvements shall commence within one year and complete it within five, so that's six years. Is that a standard?
Yeah, it's standard for us, yeah. It's always been that way.
Well, that doesn't mean.
Always been that way.
Just because it's always been that way, doesn't mean it's.
I think it should be changed.
Yes, I do.
Oh, wow.
The statue.
The same statue?
Is it a state statue or a Bethel statue?
No, it's a state statue.
Okay.
All right.
That answered my question.
Right?
Yep.
Mr. Legnar, any comments, questions?
No, I'm good.
Jeff?
No, no comments.
Paul?
No, sir. Thank you.
Sorry, I know everyone's, real quick, the letter, sending out letters.
Oh.
The, so they made an attempt. That's all they have, they have to do ahead of the meeting.
Okay, I know that it says in our regulations fifteen days prior to, but I will tell you that I'm aware of, and I can verify this with arbitrary. But this has come up over the years in the past, since I've been here thirty-five years.
Sure.
Um, that uh there's court cases that you cannot deny an application based on not being notified of.
But can you push? If Danny, like, like today.
Oh, you could push.
He'll, he'll, he said.
Just talking in general about.
Yeah, just talking general, not about what's going on. Um, you know, you can look in the drive and see, we're supposed to get notification of them sending mail out, which is, which is, will be in the drive tomorrow, you can all look at it. But in regard, in a general conversation, if they don't notify anybody or attempt to know and notify anyone, I think you have grounds to do something.
Okay.
But there is, but there are letters, there were letters that were notified, people, you know, the judge will sit here and tell you. Well, how come all these people were here if nobody was told?
Sure.
Yeah.
Did I hear right that they didn't get the green cards? He did something different?
No, it's a certified mailing, which they're allowed to do.
Okay.
We changed our recs, so they could do a certified mailing instead of the green cards. I think it's a little less expensive.
Yeah. Last thing.
Oh, re, no return receipt probably, just as they, they have to prove that they mailed them.
That's right. They have to prove that they mailed. That's all. You're right, Bob.
Um, sidewalks, email out.
You know, I I I was looking at the weather and it just didn't, the weather didn't look good for the next week.
But I I'd like, I. Milwaukee.
Yeah, we are gonna do.
Okay.
We do wanna do a sidewalk.
Okay.
You know, and then I'm thinking, okay, well, next weekend's Super Bowl.
That's Sunday, that's not Saturday.
Super Bowl.
Nobody watching it anyways.
Yeah, no one's watching this one.
It's a whole week. Um, listen, I'm okay with going on.
If possible.
You wanna try to do it this Saturday?
We make sure we do it in February. I'm out in March.
Okay. So I was looking at this.
Chris, if we just have some dates set down, we can figure it out.
All right, because I was looking at this weather, the weather for this weekend, and it looks like it's gonna be um uh raining. And it was in the thirties. And then when I looked at one day, it was forty-five and cloudy. I I don't know, you wanna do, definitely do a weekend.
As long as I have, uh, you know, enough, I can schedule for my weekday if I have enough notice.
They had said traffic was worse at three o'clock on a week. I'm sorry if you remember.
Yeah.
All right, well, I didn't remember because I was busy doing other things, so three P M. On a weekday.
Yeah.
Three, that's what he said.
Man, is that what's going on weekday?
Because that's when lots of traffic.
Do you remember?
Yeah, that was one of the things, because they want them to see all the traffic.
Yeah, I'll give you two days next week.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I have, sorry. Me, can we? More commission comments? No, public comment, anyone there left?
Um, I'm not seeing anyone with their hands raised.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh. All in favor?